Since your success in the springtime in the primary, I'm wondering what types of things you might have done to become more familiar with county government operations, more familiar with the Home Rule Charter, just better prepared to do the job?
Well, you know, I've attended meeting, meetings, not as, not that many, but I've attended a few. I've reread the charter again, and I think we all probably read it again and again, and you have to keep reading it because there, in my way of reading the charter, there were things that need clarification. So, I mean, there are, there are pieces of the charter that I don't feel are that clear, or as clear as they could be. I went to the meeting with, I was very interested in the ethics. I was at the meeting with the, the group that presented the Code of Ethics, which they're to be commended. That was an outstanding job. I liked that, you know, format that they had. I liked what they had in there. They did put some teeth in. I think that there may need to be some stronger language. And again, I mean, I think all of this is a good work in progress, but as you try to interpret what the Home Rule says, or as you try to utilize what they're saying, you may then see where there's a gap, or something that has to be redefined or rewarded. But everyone's to be commended. Personnel Code, I've read that over the, they put, put that out recently, I've read that. So, I think they've given a good foundation for the new council and the manager to work with, but further clarifications, I think, need to happen.
And I just want to clarify, when you say you've been to meetings of the Transition Committee, or the Commissioners, or both?
The Transition.
Okay. And that leads into my next question, which was, given the meetings that you've been to, what you might have read or heard about the Transition Committee meetings, are you comfortable that that group has accomplished enough of its tasks to make a smooth transition occur in January of next year? Or do you have specific concerns about areas that you think they might have fallen behind?
You know, I, I think for a group of volunteers, they've done a phenomenal job. And, you know, they're working hard, they have documents, real solid documents to read, and until we put this new government into action, I don't know what more you could do. And I, I know there's been controversy about the manager, about, you know, I think they have 70 candidates, and they're going to put them in three different levels. You know, right off the bat, I'm sure there's people there that don't have the proper qualifications, and they could probably be dismissed. And I also agreed with the stipulation that they weren't going to put the names out there. I mean, I think there's, there's a time and a place, when you look at your applications, you check your references. I will be very big on checking references, because people could look very good on paper. But until you check those references, and then I think when you get it down to maybe three, then it might be a time to let the public know. I like the idea of one of your school districts recently, Hanover, I think, when they got their principal down to two, they had a forum. And I'd like to suggest that maybe when we get it down to three candidates, that we hold a forum, and the public can come out and get an opportunity to see who the three finalists are.
If you're elected to be part of this group, how much time do you expect to dedicate to the council post?
Well, I think in the beginning, it's going to be pretty intense. Now, I come from a background of Hazelton Area School Board, which was almost the size of the county, in terms of the people that were employed in Hazel. I think we were a little less than the county in the budget. And we are a school board that meets a few times a month, and then we have special meetings. So, we, we meet anywhere three, four, five times a month. So, I'm used to that kind of rigor. I think as this plays out, we won't need to do it, but in the beginning, when you have your row officers leaving, and you have people, you know, I guess are going to be acting in charge of those departments, and you need to pick a manager, and you need to get this whole thing up and running, I think in the beginning, we might have to give a lot of time, and we might have a lot of meetings, but I think that's to be expected, because I think all of us would want a smooth, as smooth a transition as possible. So, I think initially, probably a lot of meetings, but then again, the person who's going to manage this is going to be the manager. So, I think once he or she gets acclimated, gets selected, feels comfortable, then I, I would think, hopefully, we're going to pick someone that can hit the ground running.
If you're a council member, do you think it's appropriate to have a daily or weekly presence in the courthouse? Or would you have some other apparatus in place so that county workers and the public could get ahold of you?
I have always made myself accessible. Anyone can call me that wants to. As far as me being a presence in day-to-day operations anywhere, I've never done that. I didn't do it when I was president of the school board. I didn't feel, you know, there were principals in place, there were administrators in place. That's not my job to come in and micromanage. If anyone wants to reach me as elected official, I always keep my phone on, and I, I return calls. I'm very good about returning calls. I think that's part of the job. So, if someone wants to talk to me, I give my cell number out, you can give me a call. I'm very good at returning calls. As far as seeing me running through the courthouse, and being where I shouldn't be, or somebody showed, no, do your job. When I'm at the table, and I'm at the council table, and I have to make decisions, I will be looking for the information that I need to make good decisions, I will be looking for good outcomes. But I, you will not turn around and see me standing there, no.
If elected, would you vote to approve the appointment of a relative to a county authority board order commission?
No, no, never. I think, you know, the Code of Ethics is saying no to that. I mean, that is the one thing, you know, this has to be a new, the public is waiting and watching, and they are not going to believe us in the beginning. When this whole process starts, they're going to be watching and waiting, decision after decision after decision. And we need to show we adhere to a higher standard. Everybody on that council needs to hold themselves to a higher standard. And the Code of Ethics already says you cannot put anyone in that's related. I will be looking for, I will be questioning a manager, hiring a manager, that has any kind of meaningful ties to anyone in the county. Now, that, that kind of mindset that, you know, that lurks in Luzerne County has to stop. You know, it cannot be business as usual, this is an opportunity for a new day, an opportunity for us to do great things. But we can't keep, if we keep doing what we've done in the past, we're all going to sink.
Do you have an area of expertise, a skill set, that you think you'd bring to this council? Be it with numbers in budgeting, or legal background, or contract negotiation? Can you point to a specific area?
You know, I think that I have experience. I think the experience I bring, eight years on a school board, six years on the Luzerne County Community College Board, five years on the Diversity Commission, co-founding an advocacy group in Hazelton that's three years old, spearheading a movement that raised over $300 in private and public funds for a performing arts center that's scheduled to open this Sunday in Hazelton. So, I think the experience I bring to the table, managing a budget this size, being at contract negotiations, AFSMI, PNA, Teamsters, I've done all those kinds of contract negotiations. So, hopefully, I bring some good experience to the table.
And aside from specific skills, do you feel that you have attributes or characteristics that would be beneficial to a group like this?
I think I'm a good lis, well, first of all, I, I do my homework. So, I do my, you know, I need to be prepared. I don't feel comfortable if I'm not prepared. I think I'm a good listener. I'm not someone that has to get my own way. I will be looking to trust other members of the council that I feel, if I trust someone, they may have more expertise than me. We have some people right now running that are, in the past, were bankers, or we have some people that are teachers. So, everybody's going to bring a different quality, and I'm willing to say, this is how I see this particular situation, but I'm willing to hear another point of view, and I'm willing to change how I looked at something. And I base things usually on facts, personalities, names, people, they, they're not, you know, that shouldn't be important. What needs to be important is, how do we make a good decision here? Because we are responsible to everyone in the county for good government. It's not a democratic decision, oh, this is how a Democrat should respond, this is how a Republican, no. How do we respond as elected officials, so that we turn around what had, what this county has become? We can't unring the bell. We can't unring the bell. We are heavily in debt. You know, your article today in The Time, you know, Jennifer's article was excellent today. I've been following her articles, dealing with that, I mean, over $400 million in debt. Well, that's what it is. A culture of corruption, well, that's what it is. So, moving forward, how do we make this, take today, take what's going to happen in January as a new opportunity, as a fresh start? This is, so I'm hoping everyone in the community is excited. We have an opportunity here for a new beginning, a fresh start.
One of the biggest challenges for that group taking over in January is going to be coming up with some sort of a workable budget. Do you have specific ideas for areas that could be explored for cost savings? On the flip side of that, do you think there are areas in the county right now where we're missing out on revenues for one, for one reason or another?
You know, like I said, you're, we can't unring the bell here. I mean, that, that $400 million is not going to be, I mean, the debt is, what, 350% higher than your operating budget? And then you have an operating budget, and I would imagine, probably 70, 80% of that budget right off the top is salaries and benefits, interest on the debt. You probably have very little wiggle room, but you must balance from, from this point forward, like I said, it is what it is. You must have a balanced budget every year, so that has to be figured out always. We must aggressively, aggressively refinance any of our debt whenever we can, but that also has a period of time, because there's some bonds that cannot be refinanced for a period of time. So, but those that can be, work on creating, you know, today, in today's paper, there's that you were, Jennifer was saying that we could have a $20 million if we get a better credit rating. So, that's, that's number one. I agree with the Commissioners, get a better credit rating, see if the past few years can help your credit rating. Once that happens, you try to refinance aggressively every time it's possible. Then you maybe do, you have your manager do some kind of an assessment. Let's look at a needs assessment here, let's look at, are we duplicating jobs? Are we duplicating services? And through attrition, you know, we probably have to cut back. I would hope the manager would look for opportunities to find new revenue sources. You need to do your, your assessments, because not only do property taxes go up, they also go down. So, you need to do that maybe every three years. But to say there's, there's a rainbow here would be misleading, would be misleading. I think we need, and I think, but, but we also have to make sure that, I mean, it's, it's so reckless, what's been done to this county. It's just pure recklessness to have that kind of debt. What was everybody thinking? And now we have to work aggressively to, and it's, it's not going to happen overnight. I mean, if, if somebody else might have a magic pill to give everybody, I don't have it, I don't know.
On the subject of the county and its workforce, I'm wondering what you feel might be an appropriate or reasonable fringe benefit package for those county workers? Things such as number of sick days, number of vacation days?
You know, you know, we have to, you know, and I know this terrifies people, but we have to look at benefit packages, making sure that they are realistic to, to what our means are. You know, healthcare is one that I think we need to look at. We need, you know, the school district that I was with, our, our teachers never paid any health insurance, and now they're paying $25 a week. Recently, I was, you know, with the Luzerne County Community College, we didn't, there was nothing put in there for healthcare. I think that has to be looked at. What percentage do you need to pay for healthcare? Healthcare is the elephant in the room. So, I think, you know, we need to look at what the benefits are. I think everyone in the county would understand the kind of predicament we now are in. We want to give everybody a fair and just wage. We want everybody to get good benefits, but they have to be realistic.
Okay. What do you feel is the county's responsibility in funding outside organizations, things such as public libraries?
I am a proponent of, in, in the past, giving libraries funding. However, right now, with the kind of situation that the county is in, I think right now we have to worry about, what is the funding that we have? Can we, I mean, as far as, are you asking about borrowing?
Um, no.
If you're asking about borrowing, I'd say no. Oh, well, if you're asking about how do you, how do you spread the resources that you have?
Should the county be providing an income stream to things that are outside county government operations?
A library to me is something that everyone in the county can benefit from. That's where people that, you know, might not have money to go to a bookstore can use. That's the great equalizer. So, if you had extra funding, yes, I would support that. I'm also supporting our social agencies. There's always going to be a percentage of our population that needs to have resources. You have your aging, you have your children in youth, you know, you have children that need protection. The role of government is to offer the services that people need because of whatever station or whatever place they are at this point of time. So, the role of government is not to enrich yourself, give your buddy a job, give your friend a job, but to look at, who are the people that need protection in the government, in our government? And that's where I would look at, where the resources would be. As far as borrowing money, I don't think we can borrow any money. I think that word has to go out. You know, the days of borrowing may be halted for a while. I would not encourage us borrowing any money.
If you're elected to serve on the council, would, would you be interested in serving as its chairperson? And if not, what characteristics would you be looking for in a chair for the county?
I personally wouldn't be interested in serving as chair. I think that the person that needs to be the chair, you know, I'm, I like the job Jim Bobek is doing. I think somebody like Jim Bobek, who is, someone like him, you know, he's already, he knows more, I, I need a learning curve, a little bit too. I mean, I've never been, I've been a school director, I've been, you know, on the LCC Board. Initially, no, I wouldn't want to take the chairmanship. I think I need to familiarize myself with, with other things going on in this county. This is a large county, and I would not be comfortable. When I became a president of the school board, when I first got elected, I didn't, you know, well, I wasn't offered the chair, but I did not want to be chairman. So, I personally, it's not a position I will be looking for, but I think that there's very many qualified council people running that I would support.
And if elected, would you bring a certain, a particular issue to the council? Is there something you feel passionate about, something that's not being discussed enough? You think, we hear some candidates talking about natural gas issues, we hear people talking about property tax issues. Or on the flip side of that, do you feel it's just up to the county manager to bring the business to the table and the council discuss?
I think, you know, I think it should be up to the county manager. You know, he should, hopefully, he's going to have a vision, and he's going to be able to see how we get this county moving forward. Now, if I had something that I felt I would like to be considered, yes. But I also think that we have to remember what our role is, you know, we're the legislative role. I don't see myself as a job, you know, grower. I don't know how, how I, as legislative branch there, is going to be somebody that's going to bring jobs into the county. Now, down the road, your county manager, you know, we, we have people trusting us again, we trust, they trust the government, they see the good things that we're going to be doing, people are going to want to relocate here. I mean, thinking that we're a kind of a county that does things right, that has a high moral code, we care about our citizens, we're here for, the old days, when, you know, elected officials were respected and revered, because they were here, not because they had some ideology they wanted to jam down somebody's throat, but because they could reach across the table, and they could get the job done, because they cared about making a difference in the community, and they cared about the next generation. I'm horrified if we don't hurry up and clean this mess. And what are we telling the next generation? So, I think as we move forward, as we have a manager with vision, if we have a council that people trust, if we have people saying, you know, Luzerne County, what a form of government, those, those people care about the community, they want to do what's right for everybody. Then businesses will come in, but as far as me being the job grower, no. That's the manager's job.
Any questions from the group at this point? How much do you plan on raising spending for your campaign?
Well, I think, this is interesting, I think I might have raised this time, I think I might almost have $1,000 in donations that people have donated to me.
That's good.
But that's all, you know, I'm not-
Do you have a limit on donations, on the amount, or was there any kind of limitation?
Well, I wouldn't take more than, some people that have seen that I'm running have offered me money, but I, I haven't taken more than, I won't take, $500 is too much from one person. I mean, that's too high. But I only got $1,000, so I guess I-
So, that might have been-
I think I have about $900 or $1,000. So, that probably will be what I will be raising.
You're signing, you share signs with Jim Bobek?
Mm-hmm. And I'm sharing signs, well, because, you know, I had, think I had mentioned this before, is that I have great admiration for the job that he's doing, and we had decided that we would team up. It also makes it more cost efficient to run together, and we admire each other, you know, we, we sort of have the same vision for the county.
You spend no money in the spring?
I spend about $200 and, maybe $250.
And in general election, you expect to spend how much?
Well, I think I have almost $1,000.
In contributions, but will you be-
But contributions.
Will you be adding to that?
No, no. I mean, if I, that's a lot of money to me. That's enough for a county council race.
Do you feel that you have a, we talked a little bit about it in the beginning, do you feel you have a base of support that because of groups or organizations you belong to, or is it really a matter of geography, that people in Hazel know, know your name, and that's where your votes came from?
Well, I spent less than $250 when I was 19, in this end of the county. So, I had no signs. I had no ads. I really had nothing, so I was sort of grateful for that. I think that, I think I have a track record, I think I have a reputation. I mean, I, and I tell people that all the time, don't take my word for it, but like I said, I'm on Luzerne County Community College for six years, I talked to them about the kind of trustee I am, the school board. I make, you know, I'm very vocal about the fact that, and I tell people that, you know, if you expect anything but good government from me, you know, that is what, a vote from me means I will try my hardest to give everyone good government. If you expect anything else, even a place on a, on a board or a commission, forget it. You know, I, I don't do that, and there's other candidates you can vote for. And I don't want to mislead anybody. I don't want your vote if you think, oh, let's vote for her and see what, no. You know, so, so I tell people, you know, I might not be your, your candidate, don't vote for me. If you want anything other than good, solid government, I'll work my hardest, I'll try hard, I'll represent everyone. But if you need more than that, don't, don't waste your vote on me.
Did you have concerns during this race in the spring, or at any point, that, that there was something improper about the campaigns? Anything that concerned you about the way the race was conducted? Any kind of bad campaigning on the part of the other candidates? Those types of promises that you talked about?
Oh, that, you know, no, I haven't seen. I would like to add one thing, though, with your bringing that up. I would like to have the council consider, and this is something I would add into the Home Rule when you're talking about, you know, for instance, the, the boards and the commissions and the authorities. You know, that'll give the council a big role in giving those positions, you know, once, even though I saw in the paper, people are applying, and that's good, and people, I would like the names taken off. That's one thing I would like us to consider when we get to that point. When people apply for boards and authorities and, and commissions, I don't want it to become, not about qualifications, but when that name on the page is viewed, that that person gets that board or that commission. So, I would like us, once people apply, maybe take the name off, pick someone who we think is qualified, and then we're given the names. There's a mindset in this county that is not going to go away just because we want it to. It's, we're going to have to work very hard to make sure that we don't continue finding a way to give jobs and contracts to people we know, and to further nepotism. I wish I could say that it's a new day, and everybody's going to say, oh, let me just pick the best qualified candidate. But, you know, I worry about people, selecting people from, you know, this could be part of your question, because it's from their hometown, or because they're expecting something. No one should expect anything from this county council, except good, solid government.
I think we asked you this the first time, or I just don't remember, so I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Did you support the charter?
No, I didn't. You did ask me that, and, no, I didn't. And the reason that I didn't was, I, again, I felt that it, and it does, you know, it does have a semblance of a school board. It does have, again, that you have your county manager, who is answerable, really, to the county council. He's not an elected official, so he's almost, you have your county council, you've got your superintendent, you've got your school board, you've got your county council, except you added two more. And I'm not sure if two more is good or bad, so that sort of-
And so, with your experience on a school board, it does a concern?
It was a concern, because I don't think the way school boards in this region have been operating, that they present themselves as good- been operating, that they present themselves as good, good models of government. However, saying that, it's a new day. I, you know, I want us to move beyond that. And basically, I guess, what it all boils down to is, it doesn't, the type of government doesn't matter as much as the kind of people that you elect. So I'm saying to the people, there's a short period of time where you have to pay attention, do your homework. Those of us that have been elected officials, we have a track record. There's other elected officials running. I don't think, you know, we're gonna change. So I think our track record and the way we behaved in the past is the way we're gonna behave in the future. I know it's hard, people lead busy lives, but you owe it to yourselves and you owe it to your family and your children to make sure you put the best people at the council table so that we can move forward and we won't become like a school board.
Do you, there was some concern from some areas about that some parts of the county wouldn't be represented because you're at large? Is that a concern of yours and is it a concern of people that you know in the southern part of the county?
It's a concern of not only people in the southern part of the county. And I think council has to make a real effort to make sure people feel that their voices are heard. And we can do that very easily by having set times where we can have the public come, people that feel that they, maybe not at a meeting when, you know, you have to move along because you have agenda and, you know, you need to get things done. But there has to be maybe forums set up or ways for the public to not feel disenfranchised, to feel that they have a voice, that where they live in this rural part of the county or if they live in downtown Wilkes-Barre, that they all have, we all have unique needs and that they have a voice. And I would be looking to address that and have people feel this is their government and we need to hear from everyone.
Any other questions from the group? Are you satisfied with this endorsement interview that we asked the appropriate questions that you had ample time to answer? Is there anything that I didn't ask you about that you wanna mention or anything that we might have glossed over that you'd like to emphasize?
I think that I bring a level of experience to the table and I come with a background that would help us with this new beginning. I'm excited that it's a new beginning. It has to stay fresh and clean from the beginning all the way forward. And I just particularly, I would like to be part of that new beginning.